That we are locating people. The car new case processing, that is a newer metric related to new cases that come in from the Office of Child Support where parties are just at the start of their case and making sure that we start those cases, get meeting with clients, and get this process going timely. Order establishment is making sure that we are actually getting our orders established, working through the court system, getting the DNA testing, getting all of that work done. And then service of process is making sure that we are serving the other parent with the documents in a timely manner so that cases aren't going out for years on end. So as you can see, the statewide metric is 75%. We're by far exceeding all of those metrics. And then overall, the state is doing very well in those metrics. The next topic is the bench warrant department because I like to circle back on that because we had quite a blip during COVID as far as being able to be useful with our bench warrants in that situation. So I do have the updated statistics on that. Of note, so in 2024, our jail was open to FOC cases in April of 2024. So you're able to see the work that we were able to do with that. The jail has been intermittently closed to FOC warrants throughout the year. And then since May 9th, we have not been able to lodge any FOC warrants in our jail up until today's date is my understanding. So we are kind of on pause with a lot of the efforts there. But we do have those warrant officers going out and working more in the community, trying to go out and collect payments, talk to clients that are maybe a little reluctant to come to our office to try to get compliance, get the foot in the door, get open, and try to get collaboration and on the same page with that. The last thing that I wanted to mention was that we have two retirees that are coming at the end of the year, Rhonda Johncock and Tracy Johnson. They have both been with our office for over 25 years. They are nearing the end of their drop, and we will be sad to see them go. But with that, there's going to be a ton of movement in our office because those positions, then people in other positions will bid in, which will create more openings. So you may see on the HR website, lots of friend of the court openings. Usually that cascade of two people retiring creates probably 15 changes in staffing. So I just want you to know that people aren't leaving. It's just a big shift due to two vacancies. And with that, you may be seeing me more because I'm going to be with every time somebody retires or a position opens, I would look at the workflow, the quantity of work that's coming in, and making sure that the positions that we have reflect where the work is coming in and where we need to dedicate our time. So I may be coming to you to restructure some of the positions to make sure that we're effective with our staffing. Any questions about any of that?
Any questions, committee members? No, is that your report or did you have more?
That's it.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you for your team's work. I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Have a great day.
Thank you, you too.
Takes us to item E, Youth Center Semiannual Report. I do not see Mr. Baker here. So, committee members, we've had a chance to look at the report. I'd be looking for a motion to receive it.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item F, Emergency Management Quarterly Report. I believe Cory's here. Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Let's see if we can pull it up here. Forward, next slide, please. So for the quarter, back one, two maybe. For the quarter, fairly busy with many different emergencies and activities. So some notable events that occurred on June 24th, we had a missing person reported in the city of Jackson. I just wanted to highlight a success story with this. So Genesis Alert was sent out by our dispatch center shortly after that was reported, and two citizens, informed citizens who received the alert located that individual by description, reported that back to dispatch, and law enforcement was able to respond to the location and then ultimately assisted the subject back to the resident. So a good use for our Genesis system and a good success case there. On July 9th, probably many are aware and saw the news in Summit Township, a large commercial structure fire at their marine occurred. Several agencies involved with that, including Mutual Aid, responded to that. Additionally, Eagle and the EPA were also notified. The EPA happened to be nearby for an exercise that they were attending along with myself. They did send representatives to the scene for some environmental monitoring and had no pollution concerns that were reported outside of the property. On July 17th, bomb threat was reported on Franklin Street in the city of Jackson. This was reported up to Michigan State Police Emergency Management Homeland Security Division District Coordinator. Ultimately, law enforcement responded there and determined the threat to be unsubstantiated. On July 22nd, City of Jackson Fire Department responded to a fire at the former Michener Plating Facility on Mechanic Street. I did submit a summary document to administration, and I believe that was also shared with all the commissioners on that. Quick update on kind of some activities that are occurring with that. So City Fire Department has met with the Treasurer's Office representatives to look at numbering all the buildings on the site to make response to that location easier from a public safety perspective, as well as EPA has looked at making some fence improvements. Nothing has occurred yet, as far as I know, to fence improvements, but I do know that they're looking into that and trying to find funding sources to do some improvements so that try to keep anyone unauthorized out of that location. On August 6th and 7th, Blackman Township responded to traffic crashes involving semi-trucks out on I-94. Both of them resulted in several hours of backup along I-94. After looking into this and seeing some of what was going on out there, I did reach out, contacted MDOT on this to discuss the issue as both incidents occurred near lane shift due to some ongoing construction work. And MDOT agreed to relocate the work to a lower volume time or reschedule that work as well as look at the traffic management for that. And I believe the work was only a couple of days that needed to be done. I believe it's been completed now. Next slide. Mass notifications that were sent out for the quarter were a total of 17. We had nine weather warnings, eight road closures, and four missing persons. Next slide. Homeland Security Grant Update. So you'll see listed the dollar amounts for each fiscal year, projects that are listed, some of the notable projects here. Most all of these projects have been closed out. We do have some reimbursements we owe to the city for some hazmat equipment. And then we are still finishing up the EOC video conferencing project. The equipment has been ordered. We're waiting for that to arrive here in the next couple of days and look to have that installed over the next couple of weeks. Any questions on that before I move forward? All right, next slide. So training and exercises that occurred during the quarter, we did complete a tabletop exercise for the Jackson County Fair, involved 10 scenarios that we put participants through. Great participation across multiple disciplines as well as fair staff with that. As a result of the exercise, it was a recommendation that we address the communication gap. And so with that, there was a recommendation to deploy a tactical dispatcher during peak hours of the fair. Fortunately, between Parks and 911, they were able to accomplish that. And at the end of it, I think overall, the feedback from having that tactical dispatcher onsite was very successful. And I just want to recognize dispatcher Brendan Feely. He took the time to provide a very comprehensive after-action report from their perspective with that, from that first deployment out to the fair. So just wanted to recognize his professionalism with that. On July 9th, we had attended the Buckeye Terminal Tabletop Exercise that focused on large response to an oil release that was actually the same date as the Thayer Marine Fire. So while we were there, we did have a little bit of distraction going on, but ultimately we were able to attend that and successfully help work that tabletop exercise with Buckeye. On July 10th and 11th, we hosted two courses for Functional Instant Command for Active Shooter Hostile Event Response. This was funded by Homeland Security Grant Program grant. Both days were very well attended, and the feedback we received was very positive. Majority was law enforcement attending, and many, many people that attended that had good conversation. The state police post commander, Lieutenant Kevin Rodd, liked it so much that he's actually looking to take it to State Police Sergeant's Conference. We will be offering a third offering of this course as part of that grant being held on September 26th. And then on August 5th, I did go up and assist with tri-counties being act, tri-county being Ingham, Eaton, and Clinton Counties, active violence training that they held at Mason High School. I helped assist with evaluating in their command center. And then on August 28th, I did attend a hoax bomb threat and swatting course held by FBI Boston Joint Terrorism Task Force. Good opportunity. This was shared with 911 law enforcement and school superintendents throughout Jackson County. Overall, some good takeaways from that. Majority of those hoax calls were noted to be coming in on administrative lines and not directly through 911. That was one of the big takeaways from that. Next slide. Lastly, a couple of things. So we did end up having a demo with a company called Live View Technologies. You'll see listed here the mobile surveillance trailer pictured. Those came at a request. We had a little bit of a gap with camera coverage for the parking area at the fair. So we did engage LVT, and they were happy to bring a couple of units out to assist us with that. So one was placed at the fair and one within the parking area. And then after the fair event, those were moved out to Cascades to assist with response efforts and surveillance for Cascades Park for the Civil War Master Labor Day fireworks. And as a success story with that, we additionally did have a success with that where the unit was onsite after the Labor Day fireworks where we had some juveniles attempting to jump up onto the roof of the bathroom facility out at Cascades. And the unit actually has the ability to trigger based on a zone, and it triggered an alarm and said that they were trespassing and need to leave the area, and they subsequently did. So I think that is a good use case for that as well. And then lastly, just want to provide some good news. We did receive a grant from the Alvin Glick Foundation from my office for a total of $30,000 for the acquisition of two drones for the office to be used. More to come on that later as we look into the purchasing of that. That takes me to the end. Any questions?
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you, Cory. Have a great day.
Thank you all.
Brings us to item G, Airport Semiannual Report. Juan is with us. Good morning.
Morning, Chair Kennedy, Commissioners. The Jackson County Airport, we'll go to the next slide for the operations update. We, and one of the reasons we track aircraft operations is obviously tells us how healthy the airport is and how, how many operations we're getting. We usually need to get at least 30,000 operations so we can continue to operate the control tower building without any, any local funds. And the last time we had to pay, to pay local funds on that was in 2020, which was over $70,000. So right now, we're almost to 28,000. We expect to break 40,000 operations for the year. And I'd like to also highlight the gallons of aviation fuel that are sold. We're on track to once again break 200,000 gallons. And I'd also like to highlight the fact that over two-thirds of those gallons sold are Jet A. And that basically shows us that even though we have a lot of little airplanes coming and going, doing training, and people that are, that base their aircraft at the airport flying to their destinations, most of the fuel is being sold to jet aircraft that are coming to Jackson to conduct business, or they're leaving Jackson to do business somewhere else. And the particular jet that I have on the slide is Technique Inc., and that's the gentleman that flies or commutes down to North Carolina about three times a week. His commute time by flying a jet is about an hour and 10 minutes. So that makes it really convenient for him to have factories in Bo Jackson and in North Carolina. All of the county-owned hangars are occupied right now at the airport. We have a over 20-person waitlist. So that's once again an indication that the airport is relatively healthy and that we need to start thinking about how do we build more county hangars. And I'd like to highlight that the three ways that we make money for the airport is by selling fuel, by renting hangar space, and by leasing land for hangars to be built. So the more hangars that we can rent, the more money we can make. This, in 2025 so far, we had two new private hangars that have been built. So once again, it shows that the airport is relatively healthy right now. Next slide, please. We just got done having our open house on September 6th. This was a community event that was focused primarily to the families of the county. We want to introduce the kids to aviation, and we want to introduce our taxpayers to what the airport is all about. So we, we had over $20,000 that were donated towards this event, which was very generous of the community for that. And we had over 3,000 people that attended the event. We, we had also Blackman Township and the City of Jackson First Responders. They, they helped us out by providing their presence there and helping us with some traffic control. So that was really nice. But basically, the funds that were donated were used primarily to, to rent equipment, to pay for the trash removal, the food trucks. And it was a really well-attended event. Next slide, please. Part of the event was also the naming of the terminal building. So we've had this terminal building since 1961, and it's been just known as the Terminal Building. As of last Saturday, September 6th, the Terminal Building is known as the Robert H. Jordan Terminal Building. And Robert Jordan is the individual that initiated and started the Skyway Aviation Business at the airport in 1961 as well. So he's been, that business has been at the airport since 1961 continuously. It is now run by Ben Jordan, but this particular business is the, the business that welcomes the VIPs to the community. They roll out the red carpet. They have their rental cars available. And for 2023, we had about $48 million of economic impact, and that has been an ongoing event going back to 1961. Companies that want to establish a business in Jackson, they, they expect to be treated in a VIP type of format, and that's what Skyway does. So it was a well-attended event once again. We had a lot of community members, including at least three county commissioners. So thank you so much for attending the event. Next slide, please. These are some of the projects for 2025. We had the Control Tower Rehab, and that was a nearly $5 million project that started back in 2023, 2024. We are basically done with that project. We still have the elevator to be inspected by the state, which is scheduled for September 24th. And we have the DOM waiter that should be completed sometime this week. So that project is pretty much completed. Tax-Away Bravo Rehab, that was also completed in early this year. And if you look at the slide, the, the right leg from the right side of the slide approaching the runway 32, that's Tax-Away Bravo. That used to be one of the oldest pieces of pavement on the airport, and that's now being rehabilitated. We also got a 100% pay grant from the MDOT, the State of Michigan, for $127,000. That was to repaint all of the runways and taxaways on the airport as well as to, to do crack sealing. So that was very generous of the State of Michigan for that. That was $0 local funds. Next slide, please. And the solar panels, we've been working with Verage on the solar panels for over a year. And this last September 8th, they finally did the last connection, which was hooking up the panels to the terminal and control tower building transformer. This solar panels are expected to provide close to 65% of the electric usage for both the terminal and the control tower building. So that should be a good savings to the airport and the county for the next 30 years. They're expected to last 30 years on that. So thank you to the county commissioners for that particular project. Next slide, please. And then the, the project that we're starting right now is the Terminal Building Rehab. This is a $2.8 million project. The, the State of Michigan already approved $2 million. They just received the grant from the FAA, so we should be expecting sometime this month the sponsor contract that will come to the county commission for approval, and that's for $2 million. At the Michigan Urban Affairs Commission meeting last Wednesday, they approved our bill money for 2025, which was $285,000. That money's being used also towards the project. And so that allows the county to basically rehabilitate the terminal building, which will include a new roof, insulation, removal of asbestos, new windows, new doors, and a rehab of the interior for about $500,000. So that's a great deal for the county, and it'll provide us a nearly new terminal building for another 60 years. So that's pretty good on us. Next slide, please. And these are some of the projects for 2026 that I'd like to bring in so the commissioners are aware of what's coming up in the next few months. Items A and B, those are in the event that the federal government opens up the, the period to put in applications. We plan on requesting additional funds for the terminal building as well as for the control tower project or building. The control tower building, we, we're wanting to see if we can get some type of radar equipment with so much training aircraft coming and going. That's one of the things that will enhance safety at the airport. Item C is the, the new tractor and front end or the snowblower. We, we're needing a new tractor, the, the new Holland that we acquired from JC dot a few years back. It's costing a lot of headaches and a lot of money to maintain. So this will be with 2026 bill money. If it is approved, if it becomes open and available, we're going to go ahead and request purchasing a new tractor. And then items D and E, those are in our tenure plan, which is designing the middle connector on the east side as well as the aux apron or the corporate apron. And if we go to the next slide, you can see that, and this is, this is a diagram that shows the payment condition index for the airport. The dark green shows that it's nearly 100% in good condition, and then it lightens to the lighter green, and then to the yellows and the orange and the red. The area that is circled is the corporate apron, and that's at 25, 29% on the condition index. So that means that it is to, it cannot be rehabilitated and is to be redone, and that's why we're asking for 26 and 27. So, so 2026 will be designing that project, and in 2027, we'll be completing that project. And that will be on 90% federal funds, 5% state, and 5% local. And if we go to the next slide, you, you can see the expected local funds for some of those projects for 2026. And I wanted to finish the presentation. We're talking a little bit about the, the future of the airport with electric vehicles. We, we just had a conference last, last week, and the State of Michigan has decided that they are going to pursue VTOL technology, EVTO, the Electric Vertical Takeoff and Landing Aircraft. They've started funding Veriports at Willerun Airport as well as in Traverse City, and eventually they plan on expanding all over the country. The, this slide doesn't show for 2026, an update to the airport layout plan, but that's one thing that I'm requesting to do is to do a pen and change that would allow us to start designing a Veriport at the airport. The reason I want to do that is so that when the time comes to request funding to building a Veriport, the FAA will not fund any projects unless it's listed in the airport layout plan. So, so that's one of the items that I will be adding on to the, to this particular tenure plan. Any questions?
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Bear.
Thank you. The airport open house attracted a lot of local residents. Everybody seemed to be having fun. The terminal naming also was a, both these events were well-done. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much, sir. I appreciate you attending the event as well as Commissioner Walls. Thank you.
Any other questions, committee members? If none, I'd be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, pass unanimously. Thanks, Juan. We appreciate it. Takes us to the Sheriff, Medication for Opioid Use Disorder Grant. Good morning, Sheriff Shute.
Good morning. So I trust you've had an opportunity to look at this. This will help offset our costs for opioid use disorder that's inside of the jail, something that we have to provide. We spend right around $7,500, $10,000 a year, depending on circumstances, for different medications that we provide for inmates that are addicted. This will offset those costs, plus there's additional costs involved in this that also entail us doing assessments, getting drugs screenings done, and so forth. So this is only a small portion of what we really do need, but this is critical in money, and it's a part of that opioid settlement through the state. It was a grant that came through. We put in for it, and I'm told that we'll get the full $25,000 if this is approved.
Committee members, are there any questions? My only question would be, if you don't spend the full $25,000 on opioid addiction, do you have to give the money back?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will spend it easily.
All right.
Thank you, though.
Yeah. All right. I'd be looking for a motion to forward this to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. I'd ask for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
Commissioner Bear.
Yes.
Commissioner Walls.
Yes.
Commissioner Duckham.
Yes.
Chair Kennedy.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That will take us to item J, the Midyear 2025 Report.
Thank you, Chairman. So you could go to slide two, please, just to hit the highlights. Again, we had a drug summit. I spoke with you about this. This was with area schools participating specifically. I thought that went really well. And we also had our annual violence summit. We have a team member now that's actively participating in adult treatment court. That would be our jail administrator, Captain Stewart. That will change when we get a new captain. He, I'm happy to report, successfully completed the police academy here on the 5th of September. We hired two more road deputies, three corrections deputies, and we have two in the police academy right now. And our outdoor shooting range. And our outdoor shooting range was completed for us to use. We still have a lot of other things that are gonna be happening out there, but we are able to use it now. I'm happy to report, and it's going extraordinarily well. Really appreciate you guys approving that. That has been fantastic.
Commissioner Duckham.
Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
How is your staffing level now? You seem to be on a positive.
We're doing pretty good. We've had a couple of leave here recently, but we were able to hire, pick one right up. We have two openings right now on the road. I anticipate sending two to the academy in January to fill those positions as well. I actually had an interview last week with a really good candidate that I intend on sending to the academy, and then I have one coming up this week. So doing pretty good on the road. And of course, we added one position with that Grass Lake School Resource Deputy. So our positions went from 35 to 36 here recently. So we're doing pretty good. The jail, I've been really pleasantly surprised. I'm happy to report, here the last couple of months, we've had some fantastic candidates come through. And we've got a couple of them that are starting. The process is slow to get them in because of all the statutory requirements that we have, but we're doing pretty good. It's turning around for us pretty good. I'm happy to report that. Thank you for the question.
I know you work hard at it, but you're looking at, it's going on everywhere, not just Sheriff Department. It's going on, anybody that hires employees having a tough spot.
It is.
Glad you're succeeding. Thank you.
Thank you. Onto our snack bag sales are generating $131,000 in revenue. We switched to the wrap system. We have a chair when we have unruly inmates that we, I don't know the correct terminology to use here. We would strap them down into a chair. It's a restraint chair when people are harming, trying to harm themselves, or trying to harm other inmates or our staff. Now we use a different system called the wrap. It's a little bit more humane than the chair. The chair is still acceptable in the industry, but the wrap is a little bit more humane, and it also reduces injury. Of course, we just talked about this a little bit ago. The medically assisted treatment program is continuing as well. The opioid grant money that you just approved is going to be incredibly beneficial for us. Can you switch to the next slide, please? So same things as last year, we are stepping it up a bit. Our Strive team has been involved in a lot of different community activities. This candlelight vigil for fallen law enforcement has really taken on a life of its own. It was really large this year, and I anticipate it's gonna continue to grow. Car seats, eight have been donated so far, a little bit down from previous years, but that usually picks up in the winter months for some reason. School and community events are continuing to be a priority for myself, and we're recruiting a lot of good people, like I reported here just a moment ago, through that. Can you go to the next slide, please? Now, looking at the statistics for patrol, we're down about 1,500 calls for service from this, from the same point of a year previously. Likely is, because of the reduced in our force. Miles driven is up, and I think that's a combination of the two. I have one car going a little bit more places. Citations are up by about 500, I believe, this year. That's because we now are staffed in our secondary road patrol. Secondary road patrol funding was secured about a year, year or so ago, and it took us a little bit to get our staffing levels where it needed to be. And now that we have them there, they're rolling pretty good. Our arrests are down overall. Our OWI arrests are down a little bit as well. A lot of that because of the reduction, as we spoke about before. Traffic accidents are down. It's not traffic accidents in the county. It's just the ones that we're responding to are down a little bit as well. Everything else is roughly the same. FOIA is down. Purchase permits are down. Handgun registers are down, and fingerprints are up. So who knows why that is the way that it is, but that's just kinda how we're seeing it right now. Next slide, please. So I'm happy to report, we've had a 50% reduction in homicides. We had two last year during the same reporting year. We only had one so far this year, and we're making really good progress on that investigation. Pursuits are down. Fatal accidents are down as well. I'm happy to report. JNET investigations are roughly the same. The cash sees this year is a little bit different than last year. Those things kinda ebb and flow. And the reason for that is forfeitures are now tied to convictions. So depends on when convictions actually come in, and of course, we have no control over that. Next slide, please. Correction statistics. Our bookings are down a little bit, and so are our releases. A couple of moments ago, you heard the FLC report. We haven't been able to accept a lot of folks, mostly because the folks that we have in are embedded in the jail. And what I mean by that is they're not able to be released because their bonds are high. Particular violence associated with the inmates that are in there as well has created some situations that haven't been opportunistic for us to be able to accept additional arrests, particularly arrests like front of the court, which are nonviolent arrests. So that's why our bookings are lower, and our releases are lower as a result of that as well. We're probably about 300, 400 lower than we typically are with our bookings, at least in current trends. Right now, our jail has 195 in the Wesley Street facility. We have 185 capacity. So we're always at that tipping point in the Wesley Street facility. This is nothing new that you folks haven't heard before. But I will say, staff assaults are dramatically lower, and our suicide attempts are lower as well. Next slide, please. Yes, sir.
When you, if it appears you're always full, what do you do when you bring somebody in and you're full? How do you place them?
So what we do, try to explain the jail to you a little bit. So we have beds inside of our facility. We have 185 beds, but we also have the proverbial drunk tank, if you will, our holding areas. Those aren't necessarily beds. They're just areas that we keep people in until they're processed through, and then they're put into general population. So when we have overflows like that, those areas is where we see the people that shouldn't be, or can't be kept in general population. The overcrowding happens inside those parts of the facility. So inside of our holding tanks is where the overcrowding is. So they'll just be stacked up in there. Typically, what happens on a Monday is they'll go in front of the judge, and bonds will be assessed, and our levels will go down again. We'll lose somewhere between 18 to 20 people as a result of that. So that gets us back to where we need to be. As far as bringing in all of the misdemeanor arrests and processing them through, sometimes what happens is they go into the court system, and then the judge sends them over to us as well. So it kinda ebb and flows with us a little bit, and we just keep them inside of our holding facility until we can enter them into general population. With Chana Road, if they meet a certain criteria, we can send them out there. So sometimes we'll send them out there as well, and that'll help out, too. But classification is something that we can't play with a whole lot. We have to, they just kinda are what they are, and if they don't qualify for it, we can't send them out. So, yep. Again, just kinda touching on one inmate death, two inmates saved from an overdose death, only one assault on staff. I think last year at the same time, we had 10. So that's a huge reduction. And one attempted escape, I believe last year we had four. So we're doing a lot better when it comes to those things, and I'm happy to report that. Next slide, please. General information, school resource deputies. On here, we don't have Grass Lake Schools because this is the prior six months that will show up on your year-end report. Our explorers have done just a fantastic job this year. This is a big deal. I wanna highlight this a little bit. Them winning the annual youth academy competition is really a big deal. They're competing with much, much larger agencies, Grand Rapids PD, for instance, Kent County, a couple of the other really large agencies, and we beat them all, and handedly beat them all. If you haven't seen the trophy, it's in the front of the sheriff's office, and it's almost as tall as I am. So it's a fantastic thing. So court security still is a really successful program. I'm really happy to report that we've only lost two in the last year. That's a big deal. These guys are working casual, part-time basis. They really enjoy it, and it seems to really be taking off down there. They really like us. Mounted division and the reserves continue to give us volunteer hours. And the dive team is something I really wanted you to see, too. Two new members on all volunteer dive team. We are kind of a premier dive team in this area. And we get asked by a lot of other counties to come and assist them because they don't have enough members on their dive team. So that's really a big deal for us, and our guys jump right in, and they just love it. So really happy to report that. Next slide, please. This is the incident that occurred in November of last year, November 6th of last year. The rolling shooter on the east side of the city of Jackson that came in. Our deputies acted in an incredibly brave way by helping to neutralize that threat for the citizens of our community. And they were recognized with Police Officer of the Year and Medal of Valor through the Police Officers Association of Michigan, and also through the Michigan Sheriff's Association. These are not things that they just give out, ladies and gentlemen. This is a big deal. And you'll probably recall that last year, we had the same thing. So the deputies in this community are doing a fantastic job of keeping us safe, and it's being recognized throughout the state. Next slide. Do you have any questions? And I would ask one other thing, too. Excuse me, just one moment. If there's anything additional that you would like, we've streamlined this down, if you recall. We're about 10 slides down to, from 40. So if there's anything that I've left out that you would like, please drop me a line or tell me right now. I'm happy to add it in for the next report. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I was reading a couple of months ago that you were up to Lansing, seeking jail money?
Yes, sir.
How did, or is that still ongoing, or is it a no, or?
No, it's still ongoing. I'm sorry for the echo. It is still ongoing. I will tell you that I was really pleased at the response that I got from the people in the committee that was overhearing it. They were very engaged. They asked really good questions, and I was very encouraged by it. Now, it's in the budget process for the state of Michigan, so everybody kinda knows where that's at right now. So whether or not we get any money, I don't know. But I'm cautiously optimistic that we'll get something.
Good news.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, committee members? Yeah, I'd like to not only thank you, but also State Representative Kathy Schmaltz for...
Absolutely. Thank you for bringing that up. Yeah, she was instrumental in bringing that forward.
There's a lot, there's individuals in the community that seem to think that you haven't gone above and beyond in searching for grants to help us with that jail situation, and that's simply not true. Both you and her have been actively doing that, and we thank you for it.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. I'll be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Moved by Baer, supported by Walls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Yep. Takes us to Jackson County Department of Transportation, NDOT Contract 25-5391, Safety Project. Good morning, Angela.
Good morning. All right, we are asking for approval for that MDOT contract. There's a map with the various locations for the signs that are in that project. We have a local match of $50,602 that is coming from our MTF funds. The rest is grants.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board with recommendation of approval.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Baer. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item L, Contract 25-5419 Airport Road.
All right, so this contract that we're asking for approval for does have three different parts to it. We have the narrative there of each. Part A is federal participation, so it's just federal grants. Part B is federal and state participation. And then part C has a portion that's non-participating that Blackman Township is paying for, for sidewalks on the project. We have a local match of $234,794 that will be coming from our MTF funds. Blackman Township has the $230,000, and then the grants are listed there.
Any questions on that, commissioners? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward this to the full board with recommendation of approval, supported by Baer, excuse me. Motion by Baer, supported by Duckham. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item M, Private Utility, Idle Hills Road.
These seem to be coming more often. So this is another utility, private utility agreement that we have that the Health Department is requesting us to work with the property owner. They're trying to replace their existing septic and drainage field, and the best solution is to do it on adjacent property across that they do own. So we are asking for approval from the board to enter this so that it's tied to their property.
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Baer.
Good morning, Angela.
Good morning.
Got a question. When these private utilities are taking their sewage from one side of the road to the other, do they do an open road cut? Or do they do horizontal boring?
I believe bored. Oh, open cut.
And you oversee that to make sure that filling it back in and putting the asphalt back in is up to your standards?
Yeah, we issue a right-of-way permit, so yes, we oversee it.
Thank you.
Questions, committee members? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
So moved.
Moved by Baer, supported by Duckham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Now it takes us to item N, the Asset Management Plan.
All right, so the Public Act 325 of 2018 requires us to have an asset management plan. We had our first version in front of the board for October 1st of '22. This is the updated version. This one is a little different than before. At that time in '22, we had the different township special assessment projects and things, so we had a lot of construction going on. With this new plan, we're asking you to adopt. It's more of a preventive maintenance type plan. Until funding increases for us, we can only try to maintain the system that we have with preventive maintenance types fixes. So that is the goal with this plan.
Committee members, any questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward, moved by Williams, supported by Duckham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item O, 2025 Asphalt Emulsion Increase in Budget.
So we are asking for an increase. When we originally brought it to you, we had $600,000 for our budget, but we are asking it to be increased to 1.5 due to the fact that we had increased amount of township participation. And we also were able to do $250,000 in chip seal on primary roads, and $250,000 in skip paving on our system this year.
Any questions, committee members? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to forward this to the full board. Moved by Baer, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Takes us to item P, John Deere 672 GP Motor Grader, graders.
All right, so we are asking the board to approve us purchasing the two John Deere motor graders. As you know, the graders are used to maintain our gravel road system, and they're also used to pull berman, do ditching off the road edge. So they're a highly used piece of equipment. We currently have three that are in operation. Two of them are on their last legs. They've got over 10,000 hours, engine hours on them. So we started looking, we talked, we looked at, we got quotes for all four major vendors. Uh, narrowed it down to two different ones and then we had our staff and our mechanics demo those. And through that process, our staff preferred the AIS John Deere. So we are asking the board to approve the purchase of those. It is in our twenty-twenty-six, um, budget and then we'll keep the payments in the ongoing years for the five years.
Committee members, any questions? I have one. I, I'm, was looking over this Friday. Are we going to keep the older ones kinda until the wheels roll off so we'll actually have added capacity until they die?
Yeah, like we did the loaders, yep.
Okay. That's good. Be looking for a motion to forward to the full board.
So moved.
Moved by Duckham, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Item Q, is that Flecchio or Fleedio? How do you pronounce it?
Fleedio.
Fleedio Software.
Yeah, so Fleedio Software. And we're asking the board to approve a three-year contract for Fleedio. Uh, for the first year, it's the twenty-six, eight, fifty, one, fifty. And then they can go up. Uh, we negotiated. They originally wanted to be able to go up eight percent, but I got them down to six percent each year from there. Uh, but this is a program that we started using two years ago. Uh, a year subscription to try it and then we weren't fully convinced, so we did it another year. Uh, but our staff had, it highly recommends this, um, renewal. We have about four hundred and sixty-eight pieces of equipment and that they're reman, we're maintaining the records of. Um, our staff has to do a pre and post-trip electronically in this, so it keeps our mechanics up to date on what's going on with the equipment and, uh, our, it's working well. The other vendors that we looked at at the time were over a hundred thousand annually, uh, to get a program that did this for us. So we're very happy with it and we're asking the board to approve it.
Committee members, any questions? Okay, be looking for a motion to forward to the full board. Moved by Bear, supported by Walls. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes unanimously, takes us to your final item, the monthly report.
All right, so for the monthly report, um, our grant projects, the Mike Levine Trail is the first one there. Uh, the concrete work, the, the islands are in. The concrete work for the driveways is not complete. Uh, it should be complete soon. They're having a little bit of difficulty with their contractor, but they'll get the rest of the concrete driveways done. Uh, Lakeland is the paving contractor for that and I believe they're scheduled for next week. Next week, Monday, to do the hand patching in front of that curbing island. Once that's complete, then we can open it to the three lanes. Uh, until we get that patching in front of that curb, we have to keep it to the two lanes. For our Forsa Count projects, our chip seal is complete. I think we have some fog sealing to do on them still, yet this week and next week. And then the Detman Road paving, uh, will be done the end of September. For our urban paving project, they are finishing manholes. Uh, Sutton Wildwood paving, Sutton is complete. Wildwood is scheduled for late this month. For our mumble strip projects, they, um, have to do Moscow and South Street still, but Moscow Road has a paving project that is this month's federal aid, so it'll be in your next month's update, but it starts today. They are milling and paving on Moscow Road, um, prior to the rumble strips being out that'll be placed. And then we get to our local projects. Uh, the Blackman Road, when you get to the map there, you'll see we have four roads left in Blackman to get done to complete, uh, Blackman Township finally. Yay. Um, O'Neil is one of them though, so I can't promise that because of the bridge being out, if O'Neil will actually get to get paved this year, we're coordinating with M dot. But we will start the curb work, um, here in the next couple of weeks with our crews so that we can get in there and pave, uh, mill and pave when ready. The Columbia, um, SAD project is ongoing. Our crews are out there, um, and have done the prep work basically waiting for the paving to get completed. We've got some pictures of that. Uh, Napoleon Township work is still ongoing. We have some skip paving, uh, fog seal and paint and, uh, shoulder restoration to do on that still. Hanover Township, chip seals are done. We've got fog sealing to do and I believe some skip paving on a different road for that township. Summit Township, chip seal, um, is ongoing. We have a little bit of chip seal left to do in that. It's two different subdivisions that connect, but, um, two subdivisions and then we have to fog seal it. Springport Township regap gravel is done, I believe? Yes, done. They started a new one. Lawrence? I'm doing good. They're hiding behind the wall though, so I can't do it very nicely, but, all right. Uh, Village of Cement City, the chip seal is done and we have fog left to do there. And then we get to our maintenance. Our queue alert summary is there for you. Uh, we have three hundred and ninety-two open queue alerts as of the end of the month. I did put a email out to my staff to focus on those pothole ones this week. Uh, so fingers crossed you'll see that number go down a lot, um, when I give you my weekly next week. For patching, the next slide has our quantities for the, the year so far. August, we did get up to almost three hundred and fifty tons that we put in holes. I guess I cheated and put September on there even though this is the August month. Sorry. Must've been a weekly when I grabbed, but we're at a hundred and fifty already for September. And then there's some pictures of our primary, the two hundred and fifty thousand that we added for chip seal that we had to increase the emulsion bid for. We did the chip sealing on Austin, Lansing and Michigan Ave. And the last slide is our, uh, permit for the month.
Committee members, any questions? Commissioner Duckham.
Uh, Heel Road by the school.
Mm-hmm.
Has the state given you any directive on that yet?
No.
Uh, why are we doing Village of Cement City?
Uh, by contract.
Okay.
They pay a hundred percent.
Okay, uh, and, uh, Blackman Township, are we gonna be done with that this year?
Yeah, well, except O'Neil possibly. O'Neil's the only one that might not because of the bridge that has to be done late this year.
All right, thank you.
I got a quick question on Brules Lake Road and Leoni Township. I know they were putting in, uh, water lines maybe or sewer. Are you familiar what I'm talking about? That road's blocked off with county road signs. That's the main entrance into that elementary school out there. Well, it's the feeder road to it.
For the school?
I, well, I, if you could, let me know, cause I'm getting complaints from people that are taking their kids to school in the morning. Um, is that gonna get opened back up by winter before the construct, road construction season's over? It looks what, like what happened is on the right side of the road where all the houses are, they dug up portions of the road. And so the right side's not travelable and the left side is. So they just shut down that whole stretch of road right before you turn left to go to the school and Sand Hill Winery, if you, if you know that area.
Okay, yeah, we'll get with our permit agent and we'll get an update on that permit and I'll get it sent out to you guys.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Seeing none, be looking for a motion to receive the report.
So moved.
Uh, motion by Bear, supported by Williams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you very much for you and your team's work. Takes us to item five A, be looking for a motion to pay the claims. Moved by Duckham. Who was the support there? Bear, supported by Bear. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, passes unanimously, takes us to item B, other minutes. I do not believe there are any. Item C, reporting schedule. For October will be district court, circuit court and the drain commissioner. Takes us to item six, public comment, second opportunity. ICRJC dot team, anyone wanna come up? Well, seeing there's no other members of the public, public comment is closed. Takes us to item seven A, committee member comments. Are there any committee member comments? Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. I just wanted just to thank Angie for your communication with me over the last week. Um, you really spot on and, um, you got back to me quick, so just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more commissioner comments, meeting is...